Okay, it's a little after seven o'clock so I'd like to call this meeting of the Silverfall Silverfall School Board to order. Nice to see everyone, thank you for coming tonight. Debbie, please note attendance. And please join me in the flag slip.
(Inaudible)
Okay, we have a short consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Jennifer moved, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have an early action item tonight. We sometimes do these at the beginning of the meeting. This is to approve a resolution in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week which is May 6th through 10th, 2019. And I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Silverfall School District Resolution Number 48, 2019, Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas teachers, meaning school counselors, specialists, and all licensed instructional staff mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling, and coaching students and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of Silverfall School District, now therefore be it resolved that the Silverfall School District Board of Directors proclaims May 6th through 10th, 2019 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it resolved that the Silverfall School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance, personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. So, teachers, you guys are awesome. I've long, I mean I've been doing this for awhile now, and I've always felt that we have some of the best educators in the state of Oregon in this district. And I truly believe that. I mean, I've been to some other districts and I've observed, and it's really true. We have some of the best educators in the state in our district. So, teachers, thank you for all you do. Anybody else have comments?
I just wanted to piggyback on what you said about the best. Clearly, our outcomes are very good, and then we have to tip our hat to everybody in the system, but tonight certified people who worked to make that happen. So, thank you all.
Yeah, truly, it's well documented, you look at the results of the school district, and just having kids growing up in the system from kindergarten all the way up through high school, and the interactions I've had with our teachers, administrative staff, support staff, everyone that's involved with our kids' lives, we feel blessed. And so, yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. Sometimes words don't express how much you mean to us, but thank you.
Okay, let's give him a round of applause. So, everybody remember, May 6th through 10th, buy cookies or something. Send cookies. Okay. Student representatives, Larissa and Olivia.
Yes. Ms. Chairman, you do need to vote on that.
Oh, we do, that's right, it's an action item. I'm sorry. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Formalities. Okay, girls, you're up.
So, good evening, I hope all of you have been staying dry in these April showers we've been having. Sam is covering for Larissa tonight. Silverton High School has been busy with spring sports and lots of clubs and activities. Let's start with sports.
So, softball has their first league game this Tuesday at home against South Albany.
Baseball was supposed to have their first league game today at home against South Albany. Darn rain.
Both boys and girls tennis have been having a successful season. Both teams have only had one lose to Corvallis.
Track and field completed a meet at West Salem High School last Friday. Many athletes set new personal records.
Golf has been competing in many tournaments and building their skills. Here's an update on our clubs and activities.
Key Club is busy preparing for the Bike Fair and Pet Parade, both which take place in May.
Last weekend, FBLA brought 28 students to the State Business Leaders Conference, and 23 out of the 26 competitors placed in the top 10 in their events, and 14 students qualified for Nationals. And Silverton FBLA, the chapter was also awarded a gold champion, awarded gold champion chapter.
Last Wednesday, Silverton's Choir Concert and Belissima Choir attended the league competition at Corvallis High School. Both groups did very well, and the choir concert earned first place of the competition, making them the league champions. They automatically qualified to participate in the OSAA State Choir Championships this year at Oregon State University, La Salle's Stewart Center on April 30th.
Silverton High School had our first year of biliteracy testing, and this test allowed the high school to award biliteracy seal on the diplomas of the students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation.
Ellie Hansen, Silverton FFA President, was elected State Sentinel for FFA. She will spend the next year traveling to different schools around the state as an ambassador for FFA.
The Speech and Debate Program was named a leading chapter. This is a national recognition for programs of demonstrated excellence over a five-year period.
Another exciting win for Speech and Debate is Junior Brady Tabanier and sophomore Chloe Platt qualifying for national Speech and Debate competition in Dallas, Texas this summer. They took first place in their national qualifying event in due interpretation over spring break.
Mr. SHS is this Saturday, April 13th. Tickets are $15 and seating is limited, so if you're interested in supporting Medical Teams International, please talk to one of the contestants and get your ticket.
This is all we have for you. Have a good evening and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Any questions? What's the goal for Mr. SHS's dollars?
$40,000. We're trying to be around $38,000 last year. And as I'm sure Mrs. Hannah knows, all the contestants are working really hard.
And their families.
Yes, and of course, yeah.
Their parents.
And the senior committee, so it's a lot of work.
Well, hats off to you guys, that's an awesome thing. It's an awesome fundraising.
Thank you.
They're great pals.
Have a pretty mean all.
Thank you for your report. Okay, we're going to move to our public comment time. I'll go ahead and read our little blurb before we do our public comment all the time. We are glad you are here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity amongst speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second public comment will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Also, we've recently experienced musical presentations during our public comment period. While the presentations are enjoyable to hear, I ask that this portion of the agenda keep to the description above regarding opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. If you have an interest in performing in front of the board, please contact our superintendent. He and the board chair will determine the appropriateness of the request. Thank you for your understanding. Okay, would anyone like to address the board?
(Inaudible).
Okay. Just, yeah, come on up and please sign in and introduce yourselves.
Do you like your... (Inaudible).
Do I have to write my address?
Um, yes, please.
Okay, I'm just trying not to make me take forever.
No, it's okay.
I've been up since 4:15.
(Laughter).
Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead and start. Could you introduce yourself to us, please?
Yes, my name is Linda Tracy, and I'm the lead cook at Silverton Middle School.
Okay.
Dear Silverfall School District Board, we are in attendance this evening as discussion takes place regarding management contracts for Silverfall School District Nutrition Services. We wish to be proactive in our communication as we move forward with these discussions. It is not our intention to disparage SEDEXO, nor are we asking Silverfall School District not to contract for SEDEXO. We have three objectives. Present our concerns in a direct manner while holding the district accountable to retain all cook positions, both currently and in the future. Two, communicate why we feel all cook positions should remain in district. Three, establish documented communication with the board for reference as these discussions proceed. We are thankful to have been assured our current employment will be safeguarded should a future decision be made to contract outside labor. We also know these promises are subject to collective bargain agreements, laws, and may or may not be viable for the long term. For the sake of record, we would like to briefly review a timeline while identifying why we are reluctant to trust that process. Nearly five years ago, it was our understanding the district would engage outside management to accomplish program audit compliance. At that time, we were assured our positions were safe long-term, and SEDEXO would be functioning in a management role only, with no plans whatsoever for the expansion of that role. When the contract was subsequently renewed, it was with the expectation of increased meal counts and participation benefiting the bottom line to bring us out of deficit. Since that time, the deficit has increased significantly. We are aware, the board discussed this shortfall in October 2018. Disappointingly, the conclusion seems to be that our labor costs are the greatest contributor, specifically our PERS and medical benefits. We disagree. We want to clarify that although we have experienced cuts to some cook positions resulting in removal or reduction of benefit eligibility, the shortfall continues to grow exponentially. Examples of this include four-hour assistant cooks cut to 3.5 hours, and a full-time lead position cut to 6.5 hours. It is our belief that the district does have eventual plans to address this shortfall by incorporating non-Silverfall School District cooks into our department. The assumption was then underscored when the district requested bids for management with contracted labor. In the beginning of this process, we were specifically told that would never happen. We worked tremendously hard to comply with ever-increasing expectations in compliance with both SEDEXO and ODE, including increased administrative responsibilities, managing additional documentation, and computer systems. We do this while diligently serving Silverfall School District and playing an important role in creating a caring culture where our students can learn. We believe bringing in outside labor with high turnover rates and lack of investment in our community would be a detriment to the students we serve. We implore you to refrain from contracting out cooks' positions, either in whole or in part. Thank you for the opportunity to articulate our point of view and for your thoughtful consideration moving forward. Respectfully, Silverfall School District Cooks.
Would it be possible for us to have a copy of your letter?
Yes. Do you all want one?
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Thank you.
If you could give one to Debbie too, for the record.
While she's passing those out, the subject they were talking about, our renewal of the contract with SEDEXO, is a discussion item in a little bit, so. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hey, Ron.
Hi. Good evening, School Board. I am Ron Duda, Classified Association President, and I'm here to talk about the food service proposals that you guys received. I know you'll be voting on a proposal just for managing and operating food services, but I want to ask you, why was a proposal for contracted labor of kitchen staff requested? The Association was told that labor would never be contracted out. Now, I'm going to tell you why, why you just stated that. On June 8th, 2015 School Board Meeting, Tim Roth, you specifically told me that as long as you sat in that chair, that labor would never be contracted out, and it was not in the cards at all. And then, at the April 11th, 2016 School Board Meeting, Andy stated he had no interest in replacing our food service workers at all, and only management for being contracted out. And it was important for him to make that statement to reinforce it to be made in public. He also later went on to say that for the 2011-12 school years, the deficit for food service was 11,000, then for the 2014-15 school years, it was at 49,000. And for the 2015-2016 school years, it was projected to be only 20,000 with SEDEXO being on board. So, with that being said, the School Board approved a three-year contract with SEDEXO. We are now currently at $140,000 deficit. Don't blame our kitchen staff, but why don't you hold SEDEXO accountable and be responsible for their management of this? Finally, I know it is too late to make any changes in food service management for next school year, but could the School Board ask the district to form a committee to help food service with ideas, or even see if it's feasible to bring management back in-house? I recently found out that Eugene School District did not renew their management contracts to SEDEXO for next school year. I'm going to give you some information that was given to the Eugene School Board on how they plan on implementing the food service management back in-house at a much lower cost. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to address the board while Ron's finishing up? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items then. Our first discussion item tonight, the work group report which we formed for consideration of K-5 grade spans at Mark Twain Elementary School and Robert Frost Elementary. So, Melissa Cypher-Briggs, Dave Adams, Leslie Roach, and Andy Bolondo are the ones who are out working on this committee, so.
Hello. Hi.
Hi.
We have a visual presentation that Andy's been setting up.
I am pleased that Leslie and Dave and Melissa are here this evening to present this information. I told them that I would just spend a minute quickly introducing this work group and the efforts that this work group put into coming up with some recommendations for you. But I think just as importantly, this work group is having, I think, a timely, or did have a timely conversation, and it's a conversation that they are clearly extending to you, going to be asking you the same thing with recommendations. So, here's a quick summary of the folks that were on the work group. We have a number of parents, each principal from Robert Frost and Mark Twain, teachers representing each school, special education representatives, classified staff members from each school and district level within the year. It was quite a diverse and well-represented group, and they were incredibly focused. This group met for two occasions over the course of two months for about three and a half hours each session, and it really had some very good conversation related to its purpose. The charges to the group were defined there. First of all, defining the problem, why is this model being considered, developing implications for this change, and create recommendations for you as a school board. I think it's really important just quickly to clarify some of the documents reviewed in this at least for the conference was the precursor to having this conversation begin with, and that's related to the Silverfall's work, enrollment work group report that you received in March of 2018. And if you recall from that work group report, there was a specific recommendation given there that as a matter of addressing and buffering the anticipated enrollment increases at, especially at Mark Twain School, that the board give consideration to considering K-5 grade span configurations at both Mark Twain Elementary and Robert Frost. They also included in that recommendation that they believe that there were advantages considering those, that K-5 grade configuration, and this group did a deeper dive into that consideration and sharing some of that information with you. Otherwise, the group also reviewed the summary of the enrollment forecasts that was completed by the Population Research Center and PSU, the district enrollment summary from dating from 1995 to 2018, our strategic planning documents, specifically the core values of that document, and a variety of research information related to figuring the grade spans of the schools. So, I'm going to tee it up for them, I believe. It's Leslie.
So, defining the problem, we met together as a group and really began by looking at the 2018 School District Enrollment Work Group recommendations. There are a couple slides I'm going to skip up to so that you can kind of see the numbers. So, enrollment right now at Mark Twain Elementary is sitting at about 333 students, and their capacity is 350. And Robert Frost, our enrollment, is sitting at about 427 students, and our capacity is 475. So, one of the immediate problems that comes up when you look at that is a school of 350 students feeding a school of 425 students means that our school of 425 either is going to need to reduce and be smaller, or we are going to be accepting more transfers to keep our numbers where they're at. So, there just starts to become some issues as we look at enrollment and capacity with our two in-town schools and how that relationship works. We also wanted to look at a couple of, if I go back, sorry, I'm skipping ahead. So, that kind of captures this first slide, that entire statement. We have more flexibility at Robert Frost to grow. We still have about 50 spaces, whereas Mark Twain does not. And we know that we have enrollment study and prediction information about students and how they're coming in, and I have a slide to show you for that in just a moment. Here, I'll skip ahead to that one. So, you can see, our total district enrollment, we have those little green arrows most years, we are growing, and we continue to grow. And the flexibility of our district to offer parents choices to change schools, or to have the setting that works best for their family and their child, with Mark Twain at capacity, that means that they don't have an in-town school at the kinder level to choose. Or if we're expanding in-town in our boundary, we may unfortunately reach capacity, and we're not sure where those kindergartners will go. So, the other things we discussed besides enrollment, you can see we spent a lot of time discussing enrollment. The other things we talked about is transitioning between buildings from second to third grade. In educational world, there's a lot of reading impact. K-1, 2 often is learning how to read, and 3, 4, 5 is reading to learn. And so, the transition between second and third grade, that specific time period, there might be some academic skills that we're seeing and perpetuating in students by transitioning at that time. We also have, if we have a K-5 model, we anticipate that there would be a learning continuum, that we would know students better in a building and know their family situation, and we would also hopefully improve those instructional efficiencies as we go. As we see in our K-8 schools, they already do this naturally because they have relationships with students and families. So, that was a lot of information boiled down, days of conversations boiled down into just a few minutes. So, that was kind of the problem and the data as a time. Yes, of course.
I have questions too. Regarding the size discrepancy, how much of that is the special classes that are at the other school, right? Some of that's that, right? It's not just that there's more kids in those three grades than in the other three grades, right?
So, at Robert Frost, we do host three district-wide special education programs. Our Functional Skills has four students, our Basic Skills has 13 students, and our SLP has 13 students. So, it is not that many, that's, you know, one class size. You know, that takes us, we're at 427 right now, that would take us down to 400. And Mark Twain's currently at 333. So, that's still a pretty significant.
So, there's just fewer kids K-2? I'm just trying to understand the difference. Is it that we accepted less transfers, or are there just fewer kids in those three grades?
There are fewer students currently in those grade levels at Mark Twain. Yes.
Okay.
One of the findings, John, another Population Research Study also indicated that the next three or four years will see a natural decrease in the number of kindergarten students coming in. Ideally, we would bank on that, but that's really not predictable, as we've even seen in the last year or two, right? We anticipated that doesn't, kindergarten students in Scottsdale's, we have 26, and they're all in the attend here. So, the same kind of thing would happen within any of our schools.
And both Greg and I, you know, we haven't been accepting transfers, and in August, we have new families and new students because they're new to our area. We know that we are a growing community, so it happens, it seems to be happening more and more.
So, I have a quick question. This is kind of an arm out. Based on those numbers, were you guys able to research a little bit and get in contact with the city about developments potentially in the next few years? Just, you know...
We have been in communication with the city, but it's really through the PSU specialists who contacted the city at the time, and they had every development contained within their projections, including the anticipated development at Jefferson Street and James, which is now old.
Right.
But it did not include the development going in, let's say, off of Railway Avenue behind the fire department. But it did include a growth factor, I can't recall, of a couple, maybe 2.5% to 3% every year. So, you believe the figures to be reliable, but we won't know for certain until that time comes.
Yeah. I just didn't know if there was an update on that since the committee was together. together. Okay, thank you. So you, okay, so are you going, I guess I might have missed this actually.
We're, I'm just one part. These two lovely folks are going to keep going, so.
So they're going to talk about Scottsdale's and Silvercrest?
We will get to that, if you notice. Yeah, if you do notice on this slide, there is current enrollment at Scottsdale's at 152 and capacity at 200, and Silvercrest 137 and capacity at 200. So they both also have some space, and that's one of the recommendations that Melissa's going to share with you is coming soon.
Okay.
Let me share with you some of the discussion that we did have on our work group, because some of the questions you had, our work group were asking the same, what about newcomers? I am, my name's Dave Adams. I am a parent at one of those, what came in as a kindergartner a year and a half ago, my student at Mark Twain. So I am one of those parents that moved into town that probably the district wasn't able to prepare for, and brought my students into school district. So I am, all cards are on the table. I am fairly new to Silverton School District with a student in first grade now.
Welcome.
And thank you. It was really, it was a really, it was a great pleasure to be a part of this work group process, to see staff, administrators, and parents get together and have some of the same questions. We went through, and we filtered our questions through the mission and vision of the district, but really asked three questions. What are the reasons to do this? What are the reasons not to do this? And what are some of the challenges that need to be overcome? So let's go through, so our discussion on some of, what are the best reasons to do this? And I will say, growing enrollment and reducing school transitions emerged as a big talking point, especially to some of the parents that were part of the group. I was, I was amazed, well, tell me more about this transitions, of how the research shows less transitions at school seems to support kids' development and growth as they move through the grades. Teachers were better able to share some of the examples of, like Leslie pointed out, the different grade levels and the skills that they're learning in that grade, and how sometimes those transitions can reduce some of the development of students. Those emerged as some of the top, but we continued to examine more into the mission and vision, looking at the character of students and looking at academic growth. Those were another two points that came out as reasons to do this, looking at, gosh, I have a student in first grade now, at Mark Twain, for example, there's very limited ability for older students to come in and help those students. So I'm just thinking, what would it be like, my student is a server and he's a helper, and I can imagine as a fifth grader or fourth grader, he would love to be in that, that reading group, or that opportunity to pair up with students and help, if we're really looking at building character and student development, that'd be an excellent opportunity. So some of those, some of those things were emerged as some of the top, hike, this would be very nice. Also, some of the things that came up from my perspective as a parent, I'm about one and a half years into Mark Twain, and I came into the school district having the PTC board completely leave the school. And so now my first grader has now has a brand-new PTC board, and everything is starting over. How do we help out? How do we assist? We're asking really some of the basic questions of how to support students and staff in the school, and really not having a congruent team to be able to do that. Coming at a year and a half now, I'm just now, as a working parent, I'm just now feeling some of those structures and routines that I can start to come and help and be a part of the school, really be engaged, and I'm almost at the point where I'm starting to transition out of the school as well. And so what is the time commitment I'm really able to give the school, the classroom, and the PTC group, to be honest, is somewhat limited. So as a parent, other parents were feeling kind of similar in those K-2 type systems. Summarizing, what was really great to see, the reasons to do this, was the work group really utilizing the district mission, vision, and that statement of student growth as that filter. And as a parent, I was thinking to myself, what's the things in my span of control that I can help at home? Transitions, that's, now that I know that's an issue, I can help some, I can help in that regards at home. And to be able to see the work group come together and say, if approved, here's some things that we could do in our span of control that's really going to impact and improve student success. Now we'll cover the reasons to not do this, and you can imagine with any big change, the list of reasons to not do it, from the discussion, probably overweight the reasons to do this initially. We all came into the conversation with various, as you can imagine, various reactions, and from our perspective as either teachers, or parents, or staff members, some hesitations and reservations as to why not to do this. Of course, through the brainstorming session, we, although starting out at really various aspects of, I don't know if this is the right model, what about other options, what are bringing us back to what was the mission, what are the goals, what are the actual challenges to doing some of these? We really came up with a real concise and congruent message on thinking that this will be, given the situation, given a good course of action, and come up with congruent recommendations for the board. Pointing out some of these reasons not to do this, this list is very tough. When, in looking at any change management phase, you can take any of these reasons to not do something and revisit it from a positive perspective. But initially, we did scrutinize the list of reasons to not do it, and that is, it could potentially divide the community. Looking at trying to make two similar schools and two grade configurations could potentially divide the community. From the flip side, some of the things that were brought up during this group is, gosh, having, having two principals with similar grade configurations may make it easier for staff, principals to talk and share similar messages across the district, and have a platform of students that may bring the community closer together. It could divide resources from PTC or other, other groups that work along with the school. Also, it could also build opportunities. It was brought up that potentially, this could be an opportunity where the PTCs could get together and work on similar missions and similar projects in a collaborative environment and not create a culture of division. Next, we talked a little bit about what are the challenges to overcome, and I would almost add the reasons to not do this as adding to that list of challenges to overcome. Of course, the challenges would be creating two similar and equal schools. As you see in the notes here, identifying similar attendance boundaries with similar demographics would be a goal, and a challenge to overcome as well. And creating support system for the students, staff, as this change happens, there's some phasing potential options. There's, how do you, how do you support current students in the current grade configurations? How do you support staff and those that are around and working directly with the schools? How do you support the change process for them as well? In addition to these three questions, we also, to further the discussion and to scrutinize our work group, we asked I-wonder questions as well.
Yeah, so at this point, then, we've talked about what are the questions that we have thinking about doing this or not doing this. And I think that you'll see that the majority of them have to do with either the enrollment issues or how we can maximize student growth. So those were the big questions that came out. But we spent some time with each of these questions, and then used them as a way to transition then to our next objective was our recommendations. So, our next thing was what recommendation, if any, we should give to you, the board. And before we made those recommendations, we did a, we made sure to focus back on the values of the district. We looked again at student engagement, maximizing individual growth. We made sure to focus on these before we did this. And then we did a prioritization exercise to figure out which recommendations, if any, would be the priority and how we would go through that. And I thought it was interesting, as we did this piece, I think one of the previous slides you might have noticed that someone had mentioned, well, maybe if transitions are difficult for kids, for students, maybe even fewer is better. So maybe we should consider three K through eight schools. But at this point, we realized, well, that doesn't really support our mission of having unique schools, because most of our schools in this district are K-8. So, creating three new K-8s isn't going to maintain our unique schools. So that was something that we really thought, okay, that keeps with our mission. So, we did this consensus-building activity, we prioritized, and we made some recommendations. But we really wanted to make sure that these recommendations should only be considered with a lot of input from the community, not just us, and a lot of information for the community, because it is a big change. And I think, as Dave mentioned, when we first started this, emotions were pretty high about this change. And I think, I think it's safe to say that in the beginning, I think the majority was not on board with this, but by the end, it was unanimous. And so I think we need to really be able to share that information with the community so that we can help them see what we ended up seeing in this process. So, it was unanimous that the work group all recommended that we, all decided that we recommend to the school board that we create two K-5 schools. No timeline, but I think everyone thought that possibly by the school year 2020, 2021, we would be able to do that. So the next list of recommendations are only if the board proceeds with the first recommendation, then these are the next set of priorities that we as a work group solve. Number one is develop a plan to help support the transition for staff. We really want to make sure that we're assisting them in every way we can in that transition. And developing a phase-in plan for existing students in these schools would be important. For example, I currently have two kids at Robert Frost, next year I'll have a Mark Twain and two at Robert Frost. The year after that, I'll have more Mark Twain or Frost middle school. So how are we going, but I live right next door to Robert Frost. So I've got three more kids coming. Are they going to stay at Robert Frost, but the one will have to switch in the middle, you know? So we need to figure out how we're going to do that for families, and give them choice if we need to, how that will work. And then, we recommend that if this is going to happen, that we would adjust attendance boundaries in a way that addresses the issue of this divisiveness that could come out in the community. We don't want anything to be perceived as, you know, the haves and the have-nots. We want equal demographics at these schools. So we recommend that that would be a priority. And one of the other things that kind of came up in this that did not make it as a recommendation, but I think it's important to think about, we discussed a lot about this idea of equal schools and programming and the culture of the school, and how do you make sure that one is not perceived as better than the other. And something that we talked about was, you know, maybe one becomes the STEM school, and one's, you know, the music and art school is more of an invitation to get kids excited and families excited to choose one. But as we started thinking about that more, we realized that, that over time, as these schools develop, they'll create their own culture, and staff and principals can decide where they want, families can decide what they want to do. That's really not for us to decide that. So, we decided not to make that recommendation. And then, finally, regardless of what you decide to do about Mark Twain or at Frost, the work group believes that looking at attendance boundaries district-wide is important, as you noticed in the slide shows. So enrollment at Mark Twain is reaching capacity, but Scottsdale's and Silvercrest have room. Maybe we need to reconfigure things in a way that utilizes all of our schools to their full potential.
That's our report. If I may ask, can you answer any questions?
Very good, yeah. Questions? I had a couple. Melissa, you had, you said, when you guys first started this, it was pretty much, no, this isn't something we're interested in, but that changed to unanimous. What was the main reason for that?
I think that seeing the, what Dave talked about, about the student transitions and how they can really impact the students' growth, that was key. I don't think that, especially from the parent perspective, that was not something that we were aware of, that that, building transition at that age is difficult. I think that just looking at the models that we all saw, that a longer period in a one building is much better for student growth.
From my perspective as a parent, I, there's, I would love to know who was, who coined the phrase, but there's a phrase, enemy of grade is good. And so some of us had no idea that there was issues with the transitions, or that, you know, we're doing good, and so what is there really to change? Looking at some of those things that say, if we want to be great, if we want our students to be great, what are some of those things that can be done within our span of control that could make things better than they are? And when you start to entertain, you know what, maybe here's some options that may be able to make it better, it was eye-opening to some of us.
And then it just seemed like there were other little things that just kind of fell into place, like it was mentioned, we didn't mention it here, that perhaps this would alleviate some of the traffic problems at Mark Twain, because if you have older siblings that can walk their younger siblings to school, you're not going to have as many parents dropping off their kindergarteners. You know, just little things, that it just seems like all these little pieces fell into place, and they all just fit into fit.
So benefits to kids, and kids' education outweighed some of the issues that are going to, that might arise by doing this?
Yes, and I think we all agree that the other issues that may arise, we can handle, that there's ways to handle it. You know, one of the issues that we talked about was, what's the cost going to be? And Andy, you know, kind of filled us in on the cost of moving from Eugene Field, and the cost isn't going to be that much, and the benefits to the kids really outweigh that.
You mean the cost to transition?
Right.
We're not going to remodel Robert Frost as a kindergartner.
Yeah, you wouldn't need to remodel Mark Twain.
Right. So it's just really moving things.
Yeah.
I think from my perspective also, it was a initial is reaction. So when you hear something, you react, and you're hearing the, but wait, we can't because, but when you really start to look at the because, you can, you know, it was great to see even the principals in some of the discussions we were having, taking notes, saying, you know, just maybe be able to, in the current, be able to do something. Just, you start to take that because and really start to work on, what are the things that we can actually do? And you start to find that some of the reactions we were getting initially to the, you know, we can't do that because, you would, oh yeah, well, you know what, here's some options that make that because now a can.
I have a question about, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll just ask one for now.
That's what, no.
I've got a lot.
As good as you want, go ahead.
I have a lot too, and I'm not sure.
So I like the, Melissa's, you know, description of her own family and, you know, how would this benefit her? I think long-term, I totally understand what this looks like long-term, short-term. Did you talk much about what the individual child's experience would be? Like for a phase, are we, have you, did you throw around ideas of phasing in like a third grade at Mark Twain and phasing in a second grade at Robert Frost, or is that, where those conversations didn't exist?
We briefly, our charge was not to dive into those sort of details, but we briefly talked about, for example, a student who started, starts third grade next year, they may be able to finish out fourth and fifth grade at Robert Frost, and the kindergarten class would be the hard boundary. And then as that group moves along. And trying to offer choice for families is, we felt was really important, so that they were able to move through this change with as little disruption as possible. So in Melissa's case, it may make sense for her first kindergartner to start first grade at Robert Frost, because that may be her boundary. And she'd rather make that transition that one year, and then all of her kids will then after that go to Robert Frost. So we talked a little, a little bit about that, but we really recognized that there's a lot of attendance boundary stuff that's going to need to happen. And it's your decision.
And that, that's another concern that I have, because I, I heard that there was a prior, right, you know, the idea was to prioritize attendance boundaries so that there would be similar demographics in each school, but when you're be similar demographics in each school, but when you're talking about choice, there's a balance there. And so that is something that would have to be considered. That's my one question for now. I'll come back around after everybody else has a choice or a chance.
Well, I'm gonna, I, I have many, many questions and I'm wondering if a lot of my questions are going to be answered in the near future with specific details regarding staff at the schools. Are we going to have to hire more staff? How many, you know, how many fifth grade teachers do you have at Robert Frost and how many are you going to need at Mark Twain, K, you know, K through five? So I, but I have a lot of specific questions. So I don't know if you'll want to answer every one of these right now.
Our student numbers aren't going to change even if we redistribute students. So the easiest way to think about it is I have five teachers at each grade level at Robert Frost.
Okay.
Instead of five, I'll have three.
Okay.
And my numbers will then stay my current enrollment. If we're 27, I would stay the same. Mark Twain would still stay 333. They would just have two teachers per grade level. So we would just split that. And there would be an HR process in order to make those decisions. And there's, would be a lot of teacher choice. Would they like to stay in the same building or would they like to change grade levels? You know, there's a, there's some things in there that we would have to work out as a district through our internal processes.
So this is all going to be run through the current teachers that we have and longtime teachers that we've had in the district, you know, to give them ample opportunity to input their voice.
You're not discussing staffing changes at all with this, other than if we do this, we will have to figure out what that's going to look like.
Okay, yeah.
But we will follow our HR processes.
Okay. And I did get the special education question answered, so I was going to ask you about that too, but it got answered. And then the phase. There was under the, what are the best reasons to do this? There are, as a, as a teacher or former teacher myself, I see a lot of benefits to this. Children thrive in consistency. You have to continue to transition them or change them. It really does give them a sense of, you know, I'm moving again and I have to adjust to this and it's harder for younger kids to do that. The older they get, the more mature they get, of course, we know that they can reason it more and adapt to their environment, you know, middle school, high school, more so than the, than the primary and intermediate grades. So as, and I agree with Jennifer, in the long run, I can see the benefit of all of this. You know, the, the bonding with the kids and the families consistently, K through five, that's a big deal when it comes to academic growth, personal growth, social emotional wellness. It does have an impact on their lives. So I do, I do see the big picture of this. Just a couple of little minor ones. It says, recent facility improvements at each school would allow for K five use and facility change costs would be minimal. So we just, we just modified Mark Twain to be a K through, well, a primary school basically. And we had to modify the bathrooms and we had to, you know, make quite a few adjustments and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. If we get fourth and fifth graders in there, you know, we're going to have to get, you know, put some more money into that building to change it. What are those? No, okay.
That building is, that building is set for a K five condition.
Okay, all right, great. And, and thank you. I just wanted to make sure because I know that we had to modify quite a bit, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay. I'm very interested in the attendance boundary, how that's going to play out and how that's going to work and who's going to be, is, is this particular committee going to be involved in working out the attendance boundary situation?
I'd comment on that actually. We spent a number of years since we had an attendance boundary committee, but there would be a full board appointed committee that would be assigned to the task of attendance boundary. I know Jonathan has some experience as a committee member in the past when we adjusted attendance boundaries in the north part of the school district. So that will take a full comprehensive review with charts specific to that group of reviewing all of that, working with the local council of governments, taking where the density of populations are, really down specifically to the age of each addresses in each locations within the community to be certain that we know who lives where. And so depending upon, it's, it's just a speculation, it won't be just a dividing line down the middle of town.
Right, yeah.
It will be, it will be around and there'll be some estimations based upon population growth estimations. There's quite a bit of work that goes into that and that's solely the task of that committee. And to make a recommendation to you and ultimately the board makes the final decision.
Right, okay. I think primarily why I asked that question is because I wanted you to explain to not only our, our public here, but people who are watching, how that process works if they have questions about it. So I think it's good to have that out in the open to know how that works. So thank you for that. Let's see. On the, what are, the number three, what are the challenges to overcome if this change occurs? So you said creating equal quality schools. What is your definition of a quality, equal quality school? Was there a definition kind of given with that?
No. That was part of what we talked about. We, we talked about this a lot and, you know, maybe it's creating schools that, that people can choose, you know, STEM or art, but in the end we decided that that's not our virtue. Because there's so many things that go involved with the, the quality of a school, the culture. I mean, there's so many things that's, but that was just one of the brainstorming that came out.
Okay. I think that's maybe in a good intent. And I think that everybody will do everything they can to make that happen, of course. So, and in conjunction with that, when you guys, on our, our core values, on the fourth bullet point, unique schools within our communities. The definition of unique is, in my, in my mind, is, you know, what happens when those school doors are closed and those kids and staff are in that building? You know, we have physically unique buildings right now. We have, you know, Mark Twain as a primary school. We have Robert Frost as a, as an intermediate school, you know, then we have a middle school. But I think that if we look at this in a way of, if we can take that unique word and create a definition of not always having the physical building as being the unique, but what happens inside that building too? So let's add that to, you know, the definition of unique as we're moving forward, when we're working this out and figuring out how that works. So that's just my, I don't know, I think it just helps a little bit. Let's see. How to communicate this need to the community, including clear reasons in support of students? So communication's going to be enormous. Was there any specific discussion on that approach? On how to start doing that? Or will you, will that be worked on or is this a committee that will work on that or just the administration?
Shelley, I think it's first important for the board to have some conversation about whether this is of interest to you.
Okay.
If it's of interest to the board, then, then I think some of those things will come out in the process. Absolutely. And they'll be, the communications coordinator will have an active role in this. We'll have a digital presence, a social media presence, we'll have possibly even some informational evenings. I think there are lots of opportunity from this point. I think as, what, what this group has asked of the board is, not tonight, of course, but in the near future, especially if you have an interest in establishing this as soon as 2020, 21, that may not be realistic. It could be a year later. It may not happen at all. But realistically, I think the board needs to have a really good conversation as the next step about what do you want to see? It, it might just be a good opportunity for you to sleep on this idea as well, bring it up as a work session topic. And we get deeper into this and really try to have some of those specifics are. But the group definitely spoke about some of the communication needs, the education of the public, what Dave and Melissa have shared, is that there were quite a few aha, I'd say, oh, I didn't know that. And I think that the community is likely to feel some of the same effects on the communication that we were.
Okay, thank you.
It would take a lot of communication plus a lot of, I mean, if this is something the board wanted to look at further, take a lot of public input. I would want to give plenty of time for that.
They had that on here. It was significant, yeah, which is really great, yeah.
Shelley, can we give a couple of people a chance?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's why I was thinking that my, yeah, that's why.
Any other questions, Jennifer? Do you have a couple more?
I do, but love, want to let these guys have a chance if they.
Yeah.
John?
Well, my main question isn't really so much a question, but just a comment. I mean, I come from a sort of a K eight background, so I, I can appreciate a lot of what you guys were saying about the continuity. You know, principals know their kids really well, at least in a K eight, by the time you get into those upper grades. I mean, they, you know, those kids have been there often five, six, seven years. So I think that continuity is really great. I was, I think as curious as anything about where the principals felt. I mean, I, you know, I could understand from a parent's standpoint, both the considerations both side, but principal, both you guys were in like completely nanos. You liked the idea too?
Yeah, Greg and I are both in support of moving to K five. Fourth, the continuity is, we experienced the same thing that Dave spoke about. We have parents come in all excited as a third grade or a kinder parent and by fifth, second or fifth grade, we're losing that parent. And so to have a family for 10 years with multiple siblings in our school community, I think we could really cultivate something special that we, we love our small community and all of our parents go to all of our in-town schools, but it's, it's not consistent at each school. And so we would love to see some changes in that direction.
Great, thanks.
You know, I think it's a really great concept and it sounds like if teachers are on board, staff's on board, parents are on board. And you know, there's nothing wrong with healthy rivalry, having two K through five schools. So I mean, it's going to bring some excitement to the district as well. So I think it's a great idea. I'd like to, of course, we can't get into the minutia right now. It's at the beginning stage, but I'd love to see how this is going to play out in the future. But this to me sounds really exciting and I think it was great information too that you really presented tonight. Clear and concise information, but understanding that this is the incubation stage. But no, I think this is fantastic. I really do.
Did you guys get any feedback from staff other than the ones that were on the committee?
Greg and I have both talked to our staff multiple times about this and it's, it is, to be honest, very mixed, you know, because lots of folks have been in the same building or in the same grade for a long time. And so that, it, you know, change can be difficult, but teachers ultimately value, you know, what we've been talking about this evening. So if that's the recommendation of the board, then they, one of my staff members said, let's just pull the Band-Aid off. Just tell me what you want me to do and I'll do it.
You guys always step up.
Yeah.
I did want to mention that we had an email today and I just read it just now from a parent who was in support. So I just wanted to make sure that we considered that. You know, when, when change is happening, oftentimes it's customary to talk about the history of why things are the way they are now. And I've always wondered that, like I moved here 22 years ago and always wondered why it was K two. And do we know? Is there, was there discussion about the background of?
I think some of the institutional history is lost or maybe some other folks that have lived around the community a long time can share some of that with you. I can tell you though, that, that Eugene Field was, when it was originally constructed, a first through eighth grade building. And the last use of that was a K three building. So it went through its evolution over time. Mark Twain, when it was constructed, was a five through eight building and turned into a seven, eight building, is now a K two building. So I think the need, these kind of conversations have very likely occurred in front of a school board multiple times in the past, but I don't know that there's anyone who specifically said this is the ideal great configuration for, at the time, Silverton School District. Rather, it happened that way. People said, this sounds right, feels right, let's do it. In this case, there's been some really thoughtful attention given to what is a great configuration change. I will share with you Jennifer, because I remember this in my past, is that there has been discussion even as recent as the 13, 14 bond election efforts to convert these two schools to different grade configurations at the same time as the bond. That idea was actually pulled away because they thought it would just be too much to ask of the community at once. So I'm certain those kind of conversations have occurred in the past.
And just one more comment. We, you talked about the idea of three K eights. And I don't think this is super relevant to the conversation, but I did just want to point it out in terms of choice. People living in the boundary of Silverton don't have a K eight choice unless they choose like community roots. So I know that we're probably not going to have K eights, but I do love K eights for the fact that the most important thing in education is relationships and relationships are much better supported in that K eight spectrum. So I just wanted to throw that idea out there. I know that it's probably not going to change any outcomes here, but just to point that out. And they can, people can choose to go to outline K eights, but transportation is not provided, right? We have to?
No, we do provide transportation to all of our schools, not from home, but from a, you know, payback site.
Got it.
I just had a couple more questions for you. Since this is your presentation here, I want to make sure that I get these questions answered. In here, I wonder sheet, which I really like, I wonder, you know, that, that, I've never really seen that before, so it's kind of nice to have. If this is a Band-Aid to a larger problem, what was the thought process behind that statement?
There was significant talk around Silverton Middle School and the need for improving the facility of Silverton Middle School and not wanting to create two K fives and direct money into those facilities instead of fixing Silverton Middle School. And so staff, that, and that came from staff. So I think it probably, you know, the community may have a similar thought. I don't know if you had something?
And I think it also had to do with, these came from little sticky notes. They were written individually, so I can't speak for whoever wrote this, an actual sticky note, but in the conversation that I think we talked a little bit about was the enrollment challenges and is this a Band-Aid for that problem? You know, is, is this just going to, you know, in 10 years, are we just going to be coming back to the board going, well, Mark Twain's still at capacity. What are we going to do now? That was, I think, part of the Band-Aid mentality of, is this just?
Well, were there any other suggestions given?
Good question. That was my next question.
I think part of that is the recommendation to look at the boundaries of Scottsdale, Silvercrest.
Oh, okay. So that's where that conversation went was the, okay, okay.
We have a lot of families out, South Abaklaw ways that are riding the bus for quite some time. So just knowing that as we're moving forward with boundaries, I think there's some things that could help alleviate enrollment.
And then I just had, oh. The other one is the, I wonder if this is the most important need right now?
I think that might have to do with some of the middle school.
That's what I thought now that you've, you've given me the answer for the other one. Okay. Good to know. Okay. Thank you very much for this really good presentation. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, thank you guys for all your work. This was very.
Really do appreciate it.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Other board discussion on this right now or?
I'd love to see this continue to be a topic of discussion. I mean, I think getting enough public input is critical. We need to hear from, I'll just say naysayer, you know, we heard a lot of positives here. We heard a unanimous recommendation from this committee, but you know, what are the things we're overlooking? Are there things we're overlooking? I might have some blind spots I'd like to have someone point out.
Of course, yeah.
I think that's a good point in having more opportunities to discuss on, on our agendas. Will give more opportunities for people to give input, so.
Yeah. This was, this was really good, a lot of good detailed information for the start.
It's really worthy.
Really good, I'm really happy about this, but I am in agreeance that I'd like to see more, more details and I want the public to come and speak and, and share their thoughts on this. I want to be, this to be as transparent as possible. And that way we can have a good sense of what our community wants and how we can try to fulfill that in a way that's, you know, proactive and is, is really successful. So, yeah.
I would propose that we place this on a board work session agenda and after, that would give us a chance to chew on it a little bit. And then we could, as a board, discuss it a little more and decide our next steps or where we, you know, kind of where we, if it's something we want to, that we want to keep looking at and I kind of get the feeling we do, then we could kind of just maybe decide our next steps and, you know, where to go from here with this, with this whole thing. It's going to be, I mean, it'll be a lengthy process to sit through all this stuff, so. But that was a really good report. Thank you guys.
Thank you for your hard work.
And I have to admit too, that when I was first thinking about this, I thought, oh, this isn't going to work. this isn't gonna work, I feel like. But once, when I read through the report, I was like, this could work. And it could be a really good thing.
There's a lot that hasn't been covered.
So, yeah, there's a lot, and there's, you know, like I said, it's gonna be a long discussion.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so Andy, maybe you and Tom can talk about putting on a work session agenda in the near next couple of months.
Will do.
Okay. Okay, moving on, our next discussion item, our food service management and operation committee recommendation beginning July 1st, 2019, to renew food service, food services, what's Sedexo, Andy, do you wanna kick this off, I mean, just where we, how we got to this point, kinda, or?
Yeah, I can do that and I will ask Steve or Andy to chime in as well. It was, we're required, actually contractually, but also through Department of Education standards to renew contracted services for management like this at this time and, and so we are required to go through a process, a public procurement process that really is pretty significant from a compliance standpoint, not driven only by your policy, but driven by Oregon Department of Education nutrition specifications. And so with that said, we went through the process, submitted our, published our request for proposals for, for vendors to consider management and operational services for the school districts and we received two proposals. Those proposals were reviewed by an objective team with a scoring system that was publicized through the RFP process, had a very capable and competent group of people who reviewed these proposals and they came up with a recommendation for your consideration this evening. This follows the conversation that you had as a board in, in the fall, where we discussed the fact that the expiration of our contract with Sedexo was coming up and that we needed to initiate this, this schedule in time to have a recommendation for you by the target of this date, April 8th. So I've, that's a quick overview, I'm gonna let Steve add any more detail to that or Andy, if there are any specifics that you'd like to share.
I would just like to share that the process is very significantly outlined by ODE and they have very specific scoring guides and criteria that you have to put out when you're putting out the RFP. And we created our draft plan and then submitted it to our contact and he gave us some suggestion revisions, we did that and then we submitted the RFP for consideration and that's how we secured the two bids. We had a couple of other food providers that were, that had made inquiries, but they didn't submit proposals, so.
Yes, sorry. So yes, this is a process required every five years, so we're just coming to the, to the end of our fourth full school year with Sedexo, we started in the spring of 1415, so it's their fifth year of involvement with the school district, so we were, we were up for, due for this process. We were happy to get two proposals, they were both, they were, they were very competitive, Chart Wells and Sedexo, and we had six members on our, on our committee, Dandy and myself. We had our district food service manager, who's our, our employee, Catherine Wheeler. We had a cook, a, someone from the maintenance department and school principal as well. So six of us spent two, three hours reviewing the proposals and had discussion and independently scored the, the proposals and we've included the score sheet, which had seven, seven criteria in your packet tonight, it's also on, on board book. So in terms of the, the question about getting financial proposals, both for just food service management, as well as food service management with labor included, that was a result of the presentation I did at the October 2018, I believe it was board work session, and that, that spreadsheet is on board book for anyone to look at, but we just talked about what, you know, what would the difference be, you know, in, in terms of labor, cost per meal within-house versus contracted, but there's been no serious conversation about moving that direction, just looking at, you know, taking fiduciary responsibility of what the, what the difference is. But certainly there would have to be, you know, a number of conversations about, you know, there's, there's obviously a lot of advantages to, you know, having our in-service staff, like, so they, they, they know the district well, they take care of our, our folks and that's a very high value, but I also stated at the time that there were two main reasons that I, I believe, just from a numbers perspective purely, that, that we were struggling and, and losing money in the program. One is the cost of labor, but two also is, and this was hard to project a few years ago, our free and reduced has gone down, you know, from about 44, 45% down to about 36, 37% over the last few years and our participation rates have remained relatively stagnant. Few schools have gone up, other schools have kinda wavered, others have gone down. The report in the October work session showed that, you know, we have a couple of rural schools that, you know, are only serving 12 breakfasts and 57 lunches, something to that effect, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me and, you know, we have, you know, a full-time staff member, that's, you know, doesn't matter if it's, you know, if that's in-house or contracted, you know, that, that's just a, you know, how, how much FTE can we afford at that location, that type of thing. So, so there's a number of things that go into it, I do think that we need to have a very proactive view of this moving forward, no matter who we're with. One nice thing about the Sedexo proposal for 2019-20 is they've guaranteed no greater than a $100,000 loss. If loss exceeds $100,000, they would cover that, so.
That was for, sorry, that was for one year or for?
They've stated specifically for 2019-20. And we're not committed to five years, it's, it's a year-by-year renewal, but we do recommend contracting with Sedexo for food service management only for 2019-20.
Questions, discussion? This is an action item, I don't see.
I guess I don't have any discussion about the action tonight, but back, you know, going back to October 2018, that was a question that I had then, is like, what can we do on our end? I mean, I guess it's muddy to me because we contract, but, you know, it's like, how do you know what the district really has a lot of control over versus what's the contracted entity's responsibility? Thank you, Steve, for reminding us about the decrease in the free and reduced lunch, that that's part of the equation as well. I think that this is an issue that we probably weren't also going to need to spend a little more time on to really get into, I guess, better understanding so that we can have better discussions.
I'd like to also point out that there's an additional piece to this and that our ability to collect unpaid bills has been greatly diminished with the legislative action of two, two years ago, where they instituted, basically it's, there's no, you're not allowed to have contact with a child who owes money, whether you put the note in the backpack or it goes home in the Friday folder, or what parents are digging through it on, you know, Sunday afternoon, you can have no contact with the child with regard to overdue or, or fees or due. And so it has, we've implemented the meal time where they can get online and they can pay online, but we are running a deficit because of unpaid bills.
Can you remind us what that was?
What's the number?
So the most recent information I have is around $7,000. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, $100,000 is that, but when you start adding seven grand here, 12% reduction free and reduced here, it does add up.
So I did get an email, my, my children eat school lunch provided by Sedexo at Community Roots.
Yes.
And I did get an email saying, you know, your balance is low or something like that, so that's allowable.
Yes.
But not having a face-to-face conversation?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's no, it's, it's difficult to require someone to pay.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to go through a collection agency, which is.
Okay. Thank you for that detail, that's important.
Yeah, personally, I think Sedexo's done a really good job in the years they've been here. I know we have the deficit, I think we would have the deficit even if we were trying to do this in-house, because I don't have any figures for it, but we would have to hire more people ourselves to, you know, to make sure we were in compliance with all the regulations and everything that go along with the food service, with the whole, with the whole industry, you know, and with that and the increase in food costs and not being able to charge $6 for lunch, it's, you know, it's a, it's an interesting dilemma, but I think, I think we'd have a deficit, maybe an even bigger one if we did, if we even, if we were trying to do this in-house and much more complicated than what it is now.
So I guess my, my comment on this is, you know, we, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm fine, I'm happy with what Sedexo has done, they have come and they've, especially with, you know, you know, all the new programs that they've implemented and things like that. However, I'm not opposed to revisiting the idea of in-house. You know, I, we haven't done that for a while. Our, our free and reduced lunches have gone down, Steve, you know?
Yeah.
I think, I, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything if we explore that option as well, just to get numbers and to see, you know, what, what those numbers are compared to what we have been doing, you know, being fiscally responsible, like Steve said, you know, and, and the fact that we were given a document from, you know, a food service worker here, from Eugene School District, you know, they're motivated to, to even be a part of the discussion as well, just to look at numbers and see what that looks like. So I, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't wanna rule out the, the discussion, I suppose, in the future about doing that, and we have some time, but we do need to talk about it, I suppose, that's, that's my two cents moving forward.
One of, one of the things that I realized as I was listening to Ron, you know, I, so October was one of my first, realistically, I didn't, but I, one of my questions, I think, for either you guys or maybe for Andy, Dandy, Steve, why wasn't that considered as part of this request for proposal, like, to bring it back in-house? Were there specific reasons you guys said that's off the table?
Well, from my perspective, when you're looking at implementing a program in-house, their software system that they use to track their nutritional charts and the dietary regulations, we don't have any of that. We would have to hire an additional person like a Sue Ann, who, who is able to run that piece of it and run the compliance piece with ODE. That is a, a pretty overwhelming charge when, when you're thinking about how to set that up. Prior to having Sue Ann come on board, we, we were in-house, obviously, and I can tell you that we were significantly out of compliance. And so it would be very difficult, I'm not saying it's not doable, but it would be very difficult and it would be very management-intensive, there, there would be a significant upstart cost. I saw in the, quickly, just looking at the proposal, besides taking the million whatever that they had set aside for food services in Eugene, there's an additional $500,000 transaction, or transition program.
Over what amount of time?
In their, in their year, in their year.
In their year.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it was a struggle.
So I, it's.
Yeah, they are, absolutely, right.
And.
It's a good chance to look at this.
It's just very complicated.
I was just, you know, it hadn't, it hadn't occurred to me, I guess, that that was even an opportunity.
Well, I think because we'd come out of having it in-house so recently and knowing how difficult that was, that's still pretty fresh and, that experience is still pretty fresh in everybody's mind and what Sedexo and Sue Ann has been able to do in terms of the, the perfect audits that we've had, there's been no fines, which we can't say in the past, previous to them coming on board.
Sure. And I will say, Jonathan, just four years ago was when, when, when we considered a change to contracted services from in-house services, and that came on the heels of recommendations at the time, and the school board was very concerned about the deficit operating then. And that came as a recommendation to consider contracted services, not only for that, but for the increasing compliance requirements and the complexities that come along with that. In this case, an RFP was just that, an RFP for contracted services, to do a full, let's say, in-house analysis, what that could look like, would be an entirely different process as well. It surely could be considered at some point in the future, but Shelley, getting into your question, I really think that, you know, asking for the numbers is, is somewhat, while it's, I think it's a great goal, understanding that all of this is very anticipatory. Sometimes you don't know the effect of something until you're able to put all the variables together literally three years later. And as you'll see in a slide I'll show you here in just a minute, you have a copy of it, but the public hasn't seen it yet, and that is a significant drop in, in free and reduced percentages in this district, and when Steve says our, our, in, our participation numbers are static, that's actually a compliment, from my perspective to Sedexo, for maintaining static participation at a time when there are significant drops, as much as 20 percentage points in some schools of free and reduced eligibility. So all of those, it, it's, it's, it's not a simple, let's try it this way, it would, would take, it would likely take even the hiring of a consultant to come in and help us out and manage something like that, because I'm not convinced that, that we have the expertise to even know exactly what in-house would look like, because I don't have the expertise of Sedexo, we don't have the expertise sitting at the district level, that's why we bring them on board.
Do you happen to remember by chance what that deficit was when you guys decided to go from in-house?
It was hovering around $40,000, $40,000 or $50,000, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and you heard Ron, Ron, it was correct, a few years prior, it was at $20,000, but it was growing.
11,000, then 49, then 20.
It was, it was growing over time.
With Sedexo and now it's 140? 116, I've got some numbers mixed up, so maybe I'll look at that. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to.
Sure.
You know, I think it's important too, as a board, we have to understand the timeline here, if the contract is coming up starting July 1st between now and then, there's not enough time, based on the complexity and what we have to do to be compliant, setting up a in-house service, there's just not enough time. This is something that we should have started maybe a year ago, or six or seven months ago, so.
Well, I don't think anybody was suggesting doing it right now before this contract, it was just an idea to keep discussion, you know, after this year.
Well, discussion, yeah, but I mean, it's something, again, we should have, if this is something that, because the flavor I received, or what I was listening to, it's, well, maybe it's an opportunity to hold off on voting in Sedexo tonight, maybe looking at starting our own in three months, so.
That's actually not the case.
That's, that's what I understood that you did.
Oh, yeah, that's, I'll clear that for you, that wasn't, that wasn't, coming from me, that's not what I meant, I just wanted to, you know, address, you know, the, our guests who came to speak and just maybe keep it as a conversation, not to do something before July 1st to get it all done. That's, that's utterly impossible and I wasn't expecting that at all. So maybe I wasn't clear on how I presented that, but I'll be clear now that that wasn't it, so.
Well, thanks for clarifying, Shelley.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion on this tonight, right now? Okay, moving on, other items up for discussion? Okay, administrator and staff reports, Andy, legislative update, district multi-year free and reduced lunch data and Title I funding.
I'm gonna get this as brief as possible. You've received some information from me and I know, you are being attentive to the efforts by OSBA and what we see happen currently at the legislative level right now, it's, it's a very interesting time and I think it's important that I ask you as, as a board to continue to be attentive, we're waiting especially for news this week, we anticipate the Joint Committee on Student Success to provide some recommendations for legislative consideration, which could create a pathway for approval of school investment, of school investment improvement, investment improvement efforts at the legislative level, that could, could realize up to $2 billion, over a billion for school improvement efforts that would do a variety of things related to classroom size, early childhood education, full completion of Measure 98 revenue and a host of other sources that were identified by the Student Success Committee as it toured the state of Oregon over the course of the last year. So I ask you to pay particular attention to that, I will share with you and you'll hear a little bit more from Steve and you'll definitely hear more this Thursday night, the budget, first budget meeting is that we are basing our budget based upon the co-chairs, the Ways and Means Committee co-chair budget, which is about $100 million. million dollars less than what the governor has proposed for school district black towers. We estimate that to be the three thousand, three hundred thousand dollar plus range, which we were hoping that we'd be able to create a budget to be able to, uh, to submit to, to, to the board and to the Budget Committee. But that won't be the case this Thursday and you'll see that it's, it's tight and you'll, you'll have more information as you get those documents. Expect to receive them today in your email and record, but as you review through those. Uh, so a hundred million dollars at the state level does make a difference and your, your effort, your campaign effort at the state level and advocacy for education does make a difference, especially if it means a governor's budget as compared to the co-chair's budget. So I encourage you to be attentive, be active and a public as well. None of these come without trade-offs, of course, because some of the discussion, whether it's against student success or it's for some kind of corporate excise tax or other, uh, revenue generating ideas, which as all of you realize, was not the best received suggestion literally just two years ago. So we'll see what happens. Uh, this information I wanted to share with you because it's also timely and this is related to the free and reduced lunch, uh, free and reduced lunch, um, grades by school. I know this is kind of small, you do have a copy in front of you. On the far left is, uh, is Eugene Fields slash Mark Twain, which has jumped from about, this is dating back by the way to 2012, 13. So it went from 50% jumped up to almost 60% in this, as at Mark Twain Elementary is now down to 42%. I won't cover each one of these, but I do want to cover two in particular, one of them being Scotts Mills School. And Scotts Mills School went through an incredible transition just six or seven years ago and we anticipated to see that kind of, uh, free and reduced percentage, which is, by the way, an indication of poverty within, within the community. That's what's used in the educational world. Uh, but you can see what's happened here and this is actually matching what we've heard from, uh, county folks and from even people living, living in the Scotts Mills area is that the economy is really booming out there. Even the, the median value of homes in the Scotts Mills community is at or higher than the median values of, of homes in the Silverton area. So with that said, here's an indication. So 2012, 13 was about 63% free and reduced. Right now, uh, it's about 28%. Uh, so significant drop in Scotts Mills. Uh, and I will move over to Silvercrest as well, because we're seeing a similar pattern there. Silvercrest was close to 60% in 2012, 13 and dropped down to literally 21, almost 22% currently, uh, right now. And we've seen, again, some indicators of this over the last couple of years. You need to see this information because I think it's also timely as you consider the renewal of the Sedexo contract and as we continue our conversations around this. Again, if we can maintain a status quo with participation, I think we're actually doing a pretty good thing. That doesn't help with the deficit. Uh, I get that and we need to continue to work on efforts to help address that. But in this case, what is, is most important for me to share with you is that this takes two of our schools, Scotts Mills School and Silvercrest School, uh, entirely out of eligibility for federal title. So they no longer receive reading and math support for Scotts Mills School. That is a supplemental budget of approximately $28,000. For Silvercrest School, that's just shy of $19,000. Uh, and when you have schools that are operating on nearly 90% people, that's what most of our Title I funds are, are spent anyway. Uh, that means that those supplemental services won't, uh, won't be there next year, or they'll have to be supplemented by General Fund Budget. Now, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, right? Because the economy is improving, which we all want, which means people, there's an indication that people are doing better economically from, from a wage and development standpoint. At the same time, the federal services, you kind of get used to, you know, you're better over time. And so when you're no longer eligible, those federal services are now gone. So you, you need to be aware of that. We've let the principals of each school know. Uh, they're also informing their staff members over the course of the next couple of days and their communities as well. Uh, and they're gonna do and be as creative as possible to be able to keep those positions in check. That's what I wanted to share with you. Kathy, have you got any questions?
Questions for Andy?
Just lament, it's not, it's not good news.
It's not good news from a monetary standpoint.
Yes, yes. As is true.
It's a whole different story.
Yes. Double-edged sword, like you said.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Steve, State School Funding and Budget Update and Financial Report.
Uh, yeah, so we have, uh, the March, uh, financial statement through, through March 31st, uh, general fund, uh, financials. Uh, I'd intended to bring the quarterly all funds financial tonight, but due to budget development deadlines, I don't have that. But we'll have plenty of discussion about all of our funds Thursday night.
Yeah.
And I'll talk a little more about that. But, uh, just, just in terms of our, uh, general fund standing for three quarters of the way through the fiscal year, we're, we're at 89% of our budgeted, uh, general fund resources. And I do project that we'll be, uh, over, uh, over, over budget on, on revenue, anywhere from 700,000 to maybe a million dollars. We do have two state school fund payments left in April and May. Have a little bit more property taxes to come in, our second common school fund payment. Um, but, uh, about six or 700,000 of that will be, uh, part of our ODE, uh, adjustment reconciliation for next May, May 2020. And they'll, they'll take that, that part back because we did get a, we received over $600,000 in state timber and we never budget for that, because one year it could be zero, the next year it could be eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. It's the one, one part here that's completely unpredictable. So, uh, but we have a little extra, you know, that'll actually artificially inflate our any fund balance a little bit, uh, from, from projection, but it won't be usable. But we'll have, we'll be able to draw interest on that for a year. So, so that just, that happens. So our local revenue will exceed forecast and therefore our total formula revenue will be higher than, than what they're going to give us. You can see at the bottom there is, again, as a reminder, they updated our, uh, our estimate for 1819 on March 6th and you could see that we're just 4.6 million dollars from exceeding that. And just the two state school fund payments alone in April and May will push us over that edge. So, uh, expense-wise, everything remains on target. Uh, we're at 62% of instructional expenditures, uh, which is, was, is right in line. Uh, we're seven out of 12 payrolls through the year for certified staff and then, uh, support services are at 69%. And, uh, that usually is, uh, ahead of our instructional expenditures because we have many year, year-round workers in the, uh, support services side of the, the operation. So, anyway, things are looking good there. Uh, in terms of, of the budget, Andy made mention to, uh, to the budget and, um, the, uh, the proposed budget was released on Board Book this afternoon for, uh, hopefully give you, give you a little time before the meeting to, for everyone to review it. Uh, anyone could, could take a look. We are, we did build the proposed budget based on the co-chair's recommended budget, like, uh, Andy said, uh, which is a hundred million dollars less than the governor's recommended budget. We believe that the co-chair's budget is kind of the, uh, I think worst case and most conservative scenario. And, uh, Andy mentioned that, uh, if it were based on, on the governor's, it's about a 300 to 325,000 dollar difference for us, uh, between those two budgets. And that's based on the 49% distribution in the first year. So it would be a little more meaningful in the second year, maybe a 360 or 80,000 dollar difference based on a 51% distribution. So, um, we're hoping it gets better. It's, it's very possible we could see that jump up a little bit from the co-chairs. And, uh, at the meeting on Thursday, uh, I will do a presentation on the proposed budget and the department chairs, uh, will, will present their budget and, and Andy will present the superintendent's budget, budget message. And we'll also have opportunity, plenty of time for questions and discussion amongst the committee as well as public comment time. So, so yeah, so we'll see you in a few days.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Pardon?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve and Andy, for, um, responding to requests from last year. I think that the changes that you guys are making are innovative and helpful for, um, making the, the process better for everyone. So I want to just thank you in, in advance for all the work that you've been front-loading. And also wanted to, um, just briefly talk about the, um, state budget issue. I think that for, for me, that, that QEM, the Quality Education Model, um, you know, Andy stated this, uh, he states it at every budget, um, this message that he has, that, that that's what we really need in order to function well. Um, and I think that's my, I, I don't care how they do it, but, but if, we, we, we need to get there and, and now, and now is probably the best chance that we have had in a long time, well, 25 years. Um, and, and it's doubtful that, that this, there'll be as much momentum in future as is happening right now. So just a few comments about that.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you for those comments.
Any questions for Steve before we leave the financials?
Thank you.
Okay, Jamie McCarty, Victor Point and Evergreen Report.
Thank you for having me this evening. It's always fun following Steve because, you know, budget and all that kind of stuff. I get to talk about some, two, two amazing schools and, uh, it's always exciting, uh, a couple times a year, coming to you and talking about the, the work that our staff do at Evergreen, Victor Point. Um, they're tireless workers that, uh, love kids, that believe in kids, that work their tails off. Um, they're there all hours, uh, go to a dodgeball event this Saturday at, at Silverton High School and past five schools and there's two cars there on, on Saturday, come back three hours later, the same two cars are there, um, working, working for our kids. And, uh, so it's fun to be able to talk to you a few times about that and the work that they do. Um, uh, super exciting night tonight, not only for that, but it is a national holiday. Uh, the National Championship Basketball Game is going on right now.
That's right.
Wondering, uh, why, why at the table last year and then I'm thinking, I did it again. So, but you gotta be able to separate, right? So, yeah, uh, where we are there. Uh, just gonna hit on a couple things really quick. Number one, our unique schools. I'm gonna focus just a little bit more on Victor Point tonight. Uh, I focused a little more on Evergreen last time. Uh, kinda two siblings who talk about competing for parents' time. Well, these guys, uh, they'll, they'll tie me how long I talk on each, so I, I preface that Victor Point will get a little more time tonight. And then just a little bit about, um, our board goals of just 100% of our kids graduating. And I'll kind of start where I left off last time. Uh, I reviewed with you our school goals for this year and students passing the S-Back in reading and math. And I have a little bit more data on that. Um, and so our goal this year in language arts, um, measured an S-Back that grades three through eight, 85% of our students at both schools will meet the S-Back benchmark in reading, uh, in language arts. Uh, you can see last year, um, that second bullet point Evergreen finished with 93% meter exceed. Fifty-four, 58 students met, uh, the S-Back state test and Victor Point was 123 for 147 with an 83%. Um, and right now, a goal update just in our STAR data of where STAR projects our students to be by the end of this year. It's not 100% accurate, of course. Uh, we have students still making growth and still could catch or, uh, still could, uh, not make it. But right now, that's kind of our totals of where we're at. Right now, neither school is at that 85% mark or, uh, on track of what our goal was at 85, which is a pretty high goal. Uh, but we still have some time to get there. And so right now, within our data team meetings and with our school and every single, every single day, we're focused on where we are. You know, we have to drill down the students in, in each class and what it's gonna take to get there. Uh, just met today on, on a lot of data and, and what that looks like for our students. And so that's a little goal update in language arts. Uh, math, uh, similar, very similar goal, 85% of our students will hit that mark. Last year, 87% hit that mark at Evergreen and 78% hit that mark at Victor Point. Uh, and then there is where we currently are with our math. Uh, and, and math right now is they're knocking out of the park. If you can see, 88% and 96% right now at Evergreen. So, um, again, just the work that our teachers do. I know that we talked about it to start the board meeting tonight, but, uh, and not just our teachers. We, it's, it's classified staff. They're our backbone to what we do. It's our teaching staff and, and working together to create that. And, uh, so that board vision of 100%, you know, our K8s and our three through fives and our K2s, it's a, it's a team goal. And so we're all, we're all about making that happen for our high school. Uh, and so that's the work we're doing, uh, with our vision there. And then just a little bit with our unique schools, uh, some things happening. I gave you, uh, just a little handout on, um, Victor Point. We're looking to add a covered play structure and a kind of a sports court play structure out of Victor Point, where I think we're one of the one schools that don't have a covered play area for our kids. Uh, it causes a long winter in the gym. There's no release for kids to get outside and it, and it really master schedule ties up our gym all day. And I think we can do a lot more with serving our kids if we can create an outside play structure. So we've been working hard with kind of reserving funds to save for this. Um, Lydia Peters is in the, in the crowd tonight. She's really the architect that has really donated a lot of her time for our drawings and what we're trying to do out there. But if any of you have been back to our covered, or right behind our school leading out back to our, um, play area, there's a old storage shed there and it's, uh, pretty old. And it's got a lot of issues and a lot of leaking and, and just different things. And so the goal would be in the next year and a half, two years to remove that. And hopefully you, you can see all the different views of what this thing would be, but it's gonna be a beautiful, uh, I think really after the seismic, uh, that happened at Victor Point and all the infrastructure and it just all, I mean, that school right now is dialed, but where it's not dialed is outside in our storage area in the back unit. And I think that would be the one piece to really complete. It would bring it up to ADA codes all the way back there, uh, leaving the back side of our gym. Uh, you'd see storage area all the way around that covered play area. So we'd have brand-new storage area kind of built into that covered play shed. Um, it would create a, kind of a really nice outdoor area with picnic tables and, and places for our students to utilize that courtyard area. It would level it. And as you can see, the last thing I'll talk about there is if you look at this, this is a great view of what that would look like from the top side. So as our students leave our elementary building, we would actually create a covered area all the way out there where students would walk out to the bus line. Uh, our buses are now loading on Victor Point instead of front of the school. Um, and it would just be a, just a super thing for our school. So we're really, uh, looking to make that happen in the next couple of years. Um, we're also looking to kind of revamp our elective opportunities at Victor Point. Uh, Mrs. Learman will be starting a 6A choir for our students. Uh, super excited about that. We will have a school improvement elective where our students will be involved in school projects, beautifying our school. Um, and we will have a leadership class and we will have an art class for next, for next year for some electives. Um, we just had our 50th annual, 50th annual, if you can let chili feed.
Wow.
And it was a really special night for our school. A lot of, of kind of old timers came back and a lot of, we, a lot of great, uh, just artifacts and things in the gym, um, to make it a, a really cool, uh, night for, for our community and our PTC. And then Run for the Hills is May 4th. Would love you to get on your shorts and shoes and come out and run with us. Uh, it's gonna be sunny by then and, uh...
Cause I promise.
Yeah. Another PTC event. Uh, Evergreen is Grandparents' Day this Friday and it's just a, I mean, you won't believe where they, they fly in. And only one grandparent gets to come. So they have to alternate every year and it blows me away. And it's like the biggest connect, right, Ms. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, um, that's kind of the happenings. Um, I left you with, uh, Mary Poppins Invite. Uh, it's our musical this year. And if you wanna see, uh, some second grade through eighth grade production that will knock your socks off, this is a performance you wanna, wanna, wanna see. Uh, it blows me away every year. Reminds me of a high school production. It's, they, they've worked for two months on this. They practice after school. It's got 20 ensembles in it. We got a third of our school in it. We got 81 students.
Wow.
Um, out of 220. And we have past high school students come back. They run stage crew. Past high school students come back and run all of our sound. And it's a big community event. It's really neat. Uh, and I'm just gonna leave you with a little piece of that, um, that will make you wanna come out and watch it. How do I find that? Have you planned on...
Yeah, just, just keep, do I go back?
Yeah, I'll close now. I think it's on, uh, I think he did put a link here, just X out. Right there?
Yeah.
All right, it's about one minute long. There is some sound. All right, it's about one minute long. There is some sound. This is at a school assembly to get our school kind of excited.
All right, good.
So, if that doesn't get you excited...
He's singing that song all the way home.
That is what I have for it.
I have a few questions for you. Is, this is really nice. I'm glad that you're able to start doing this. Is this, where is the money coming from to do this?
We have been saving. So, we have some reserves at Victor Point for certain things that we've been kind of looking forward to the future. And so, we have a pretty good carryover.
Oh, good.
And so, we have put in some funds. Next year, roughly about $200,000 to start the project. And this is gonna be kind of separate from PTC. See, they're still gonna do their thing and fund what they do. But we might do a little extra special something to help with the rest. And we have talked with the district just a little bit about working together on that.
Okay. And how much is the estimated cost for all of this?
We're still putting that together.
Oh, okay.
This just got printed. We've got a lot of things going out to find out structures. And we have a budget meeting tomorrow. I would, if I was a rough ballpark, if we wanted exactly what that looks like, I'd roughly estimate around $350. But who knows until it all goes and what happens.
Exactly. Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Any other question?
I just wanted to say kudos. The pictures really make your reports seem super real with all of your kids. So, that was awesome. Thank you very much. And thank you for referencing the mission and the vision. That's awesome as well. And I love it that you mentioned the team goal of 100% graduation. Cause that's something I meant to say at the beginning when we were talking about teachers, that our 100% graduation rate doesn't just happen at the high school. It happens starting in kindergarten and even before kindergarten. So, thank you for reminding us of that.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Palmer, Butte Creek.
Jamie, you wanna know what the basketball score was? Cause I got it for you. I thought none. I do wanna say to Jamie, though, thank you for bringing up their play up there, which it's always, they always put on a great production. And reminded me that I had forgotten what Kathy Douglas has done up there with their spring play. Spring musical has inspired some of the Butte Creek teachers, Rebecca Kinsey and Dylan Uselman. So, they've been working with kids to kind of create their own version. So, they'll be doing The Lion King on June 4th at the high school. So, that's kind of in conjunction with our arts night, the kindergarten teacher, Kristy Zoller, brought to Butte Creek about four years ago. So, they don't wanna do them on the same night where they thought about it, but then they thought it'd be better to separate the two. So, Lion King on June 4th. And, let's see, Andy. Yeah, yours is... Should be the one that says Kevin. Drew named it, so, okay. All right, I'm... Thanks. Just gonna let that play while I talk. Because really what I wanted to focus on today were just a couple of things. But what you're seeing, scroll through the slideshow, is it's really, has made a huge impact on Butte Creek. It plays into our PBIS, our SEL, our Playworks training, which is new. And it's really a partnership of district, community, school budget, parent-teacher team at Butte Creek to make all of the things happen that you're seeing there. That's the maple spinning around. That's a crowd's favorite out of Butte Creek. But we had this kind of process going where us and Robert Frost, Scott Mills and Mark Twain and as well as Butte Creek, we were training Playworks, as you know, back in August. And all those, the four schools have been implementing that ever throughout the year so far. So, that's the way we began. And in October, the district, in partnership with K&amp;E Excavating, tore out all the old pitted, rutted, rough asphalt behind the school. Did some drainage work, put in beautiful, brand-new blacktop smooth surface for us. And then, over Christmas break, came the play equipment that you saw up there, the bright yellow and blue equipment, which was really all PTT with the addition of district help for the chips, which were a massive amount of wood chips to lay down for those. Our PTT has raised about $60,000 right now. That's been earmarked. A lot of that has been spent on those structures. And so, when the kids got back on the first day back in January, that's what they came out to. PTT had come out putting ribbons on it, things like that. They hadn't seen it go up. There it was. And then, we knew we needed to do something with that asphalt surface instead of just having a nice blank slate. So, we had this company called Edu-Marking came in. They're an Australian company and the guys flew in from Texas over spring break to put down the, they're plastic pieces. They heat them on. They prep the asphalt and they heat on the applications. And then, they coat it kind of with a ground glass and some other substances to make it non-slip when it's wet. And so... But, so the kids came back after spring break to a whole playground full of games and activities that we wanted to focus on, physical fitness. And that was paid for through the anonymous donation that our school got. So, none of this would have happened without everybody coming together to make it happen. Lots of planning, lots of work. Hats off to our PTT president sitting right here, Eliza Torland, for spearheading that. And really, single-handedly, for the most part, over last year and this year, doing all the legwork for the details around the equipment. An awful lot of work. And then, you can see a lot of the applications and the markings that are all around the playground. So, it's been terrific. It, like I said, it merges right in with the Playworks and everything else we're doing to get the kids involved and engaged and be more inclusive when they're out on the playground. So, just a great project all in all. Going back to PTT, we just finished our 21st Annual Auction on March 16th that raised $23,000 approximately, a huge amount, under the direction of Auction Chair Stephanie Cole, one of our parents at Butte Creek. We've got some other things listed down there in the winter and spring highlights, including, wasn't it, didn't present to you guys last year really, except for the trap team stuff early on. To let you know that we have renamed the, this will be about the 30th year going on it. The Monitor Invitational Track Meet has now been renamed, last year, the Eddie Wilig Memorial Track Meet. And I believe, Jamie, Victor Point's the first, you guys have the trophy, don't you?
Yes, sir.
From last year. It's traveling trophy. So, Victor Point got the very first version of the Eddie Wilig Memorial. Eddie was big in starting that track meet back in Monitor in 1989. So, we keep that going. Wanted to mention to you guys, too, we have our volunteer breakfast coming up, April 19th. And if any of you are free in the morning, we would welcome to have you join us. You don't need to let us know in advance. You can if you want, but you can just show up. It's a great breakfast Sheila Zeiss and her helpers put on with entertainment from the primary grade classrooms. I also wanted to mention just a little bit while I'm here tonight, an update on the trap shooting program that you all approved and allowed us to go forth with. Last year, we had 10 students on the trap team last year in the inaugural season. And our goal going into this year was to hopefully double that number. And so, we have 27. So, we've gone past that. And it kind of underscores that fastest-growing high school sport in the country. So, our second goal, last year, we sent two individual athletes to nationals in Michigan. The goal this year is to send an entire squad, which is made up of five. So, you go as a team of five. We think that should be no problem. You have to qualify with pretty high scores. Our coaches, last year it was Jamie Phillips, Doug Garrett and I. This year, we've added Fred Zerbrood, Chris Barrett, Kelly Buckley and James Reed. So, we have seven coaches for those 27 kids. You have to have certain numbers. And we're way above the ratio for adult supervision versus kids. And just a shout to our host club, the Candy Rod and Gun Club. Those guys know what they're doing up there to keep things on the up and up, safe. And the kids can have fun and learn and improve, but to doing it safely. And so, hats off to Candy Rod and Gun Club. And I want you guys to put May 29th on your calendars. It's a Wednesday night. Should be enough lead time. You guys, too, over to my right. You come join us. That's the first Wednesday after, we shoot on Wednesday nights. And that is the Family Fun Night where parents and siblings and school board members and superintendents and curriculum directors, special ed directors, come up. Come up. Come up. We'll put a shotgun in your hand and let you break some targets. Yep. All you gotta do is show up. You don't have to have any training. We'll make sure you're safe. You know what you're doing. And you can have some fun with us on May 29th. Yes, yeah. I'll remind you, too.
Yeah, great.
I'll remind you. A lot of great things going on at Butte Creek, you guys. It's been a super fast year, positive out there and just been an awesome school year so far.
Do we bring our own shotgun?
No. We got plenty to loan you. Plenty. But you can. You can bring your own if you want.
I'm willing to learn.
B-Y-O-G.
So, hey, Kevin.
No, I'm serious. We'd love to see you guys up there.
Quick question. So, with the recent additions to the playground, have you noticed, you use that word inclusivity. Have you noticed a change in attitude and students may be participating more with one another than they had in the past prior to the revamped playground?
Yeah, absolutely. And that, some of that goes back even to the earliest, just the first few weeks of school with the Playworks. You know, because normally in the past years, we, you know, here's all the balls and everything you want, all the footballs, hula hoops, whatever you wanna play with. We have different stations. The playground is mapped out. There are stations. There are a certain number of basketballs, for example. Because if you've got 10 kids out there and they all want their own basketball, they're doing their own thing. If you have 10 kids and two basketballs, then you need to learn to share. And they need to learn to involve one another in the game, whether it's wall ball, basketball, four-square and any of the other things we have going on. So, little tweaks like that have really made a difference on the playground. We've also seen behavior referrals drop down.
That's one of the questions, has it translated into the classroom?
It has. It has. I suspect the same with the other schools.
So, the Playworks, is this when they're just out not being a licensed PE teacher out with the kids? This is recess?
This is for recess. Yeah.
I just wanna make that clear.
And our two licensed PE teachers are part of our Playworks team. We've got, like the other three schools, we've got a team that meets regularly all year long to plan all of this stuff. And so, you know, your counselors involved, your PE teachers, your classified folks. So, quite a range of staff making it go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Terrific. Thank you.
Other questions for Kevin?
Just kudos. Thanks for the community involvement. I know that you're helping facilitate all of that. And that's really appreciated. And this is awesome, student involvement. Everybody deserves kudos. Really cool. And the pictures, of course. Thank you. It makes it real for us to build this.
Sure, yeah. You thank, I thanked Terry Woodall for this. So, I don't do stuff like this.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Any board reports tonight?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that I volunteered to be on the committee to search for the next Assistant Superintendent of our district. And I wanted to thank Andy for reaching out to us and asking one of us to volunteer to be on that committee. So, I volunteered to be on that. So, I'm looking forward to working with community members and administration to find our next Assistant Superintendent for our district. So, just wanted to mention. So, thank you.
Thanks for volunteering.
And real quickly, I was able to go to, it's been a few weeks ago, I was able to go to Silvertonville School, walk around a little bit. They're doing an awesome job down there. I mean, I know, we all know that that's not an ideal facility. But they have made the best of that. And the kids seem to be well-adjusted. And they're just, they were all working really hard. And other than a kid asking me if I was Mr. Davison's father. And he got, that was his best day ever, he said. And also, I've been able to, I was up at Mark Twain this last week for a little while. And same thing there. The kids are really engaged, doing a good job. Teachers are working hard. I think our teachers have to work harder every year to do what they do. And best ones in the state. I wanna just say that one more time. Anybody else? Okay, second public comment period. Would anyone like to talk to the board again? Okay. Please sign in again and introduce yourself.
I just wanted to go ahead and acknowledge that you guys are thinking of switching these schools, the lower grade schools into two K through 8, 5 schools. I think, being a parent at Butte Creek School, which is a K through 8 school, I really see the value in the older students being able to support the younger students, the community of teachers and staff getting to know the kids and their families. And I think, I do recommend that you consider pursuing that further. But really, I'm here, my name is Eliza Torland and I'm the president of the Butte Creek PTT. Took over from Jonathan a couple of years ago. And I saw a need for a playground. And I just wanted to say that I feel so thrilled that it's installed. It's not done. There's going to be a very large play rock and raccoon log, which is, they're both giant cement toys. But they're sort of more natural play spaces. And there might be a third rock. But I just found out we're not gonna get more chips, so probably not. So, that's okay. Anyway, I just wanted to say that things like that aren't possible unless you have these really strong communities that these really great teachers can promote in. So, I just wanted to be sure to say that I really appreciate Mr. Palmer. He's been an amazing person to work with through the process of trying to get this playground installed. And I also really appreciate the amount of volunteerism that comes out of our staff at our school. I chair the Oktoberfest booth as well. And I'm very involved in the auction. And just having those two very large fundraiser, which brought in over $40,000 together this year. They wouldn't be possible without the amazing staff. That we probably get 30% of our volunteer support from our teachers and classified staff. So, I just wanted to acknowledge you all. Thank you. I just want to make that very clear. Andy, did you have...
Yeah, I would echo your sentiments, Tim. I also would say that, I want to share that there are some very specific requirements that we are mandated to follow, including communication and even a collective bargaining agreement article or in contracted services that we would follow to the letter. And there are statutory obligations as well. And any kind of, even discussion of this, and I'm pleased that the association is attentive to this. In fact, I appreciate our relationship with the association. They had a good conversation with their leadership late last week just about this topic alone. And with that said, nothing related to labor would happen without continued conversation with our union members.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion in second. All in favor of approving Sedexo for food service management operation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That concludes our regular business, so we're going to take a short break and then we'll move into executive session under ORS 192660, item 2D, to conduct deliberations of persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, collective bargaining with the Silver Falls Education Association. Okay. We will move out of the executive session, back into regular session, and with no further business, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.